Good evening. The September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Cameron to give us our motto.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtes of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices or put them on bribery. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Allison Campbell, District One.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Throer, District Four.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gollit, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Ms. Lindsey Barber, Social Studies Program Specialist, Curriculum and Instruction. Please introduce the individuals who will be providing inspiration and lead us in the pledge on this evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent. Florida statute designates the month of September as American Founders Month, and the last week in September is marked as Celebrate Freedom Week. During this month, public schools are encouraged to coordinate instruction at all grade levels related to our nation's founding fathers and mothers, and reassert the importance of our nation's dedication to promoting the ideals in the Declaration of Independence and Constitution. For tonight's inspiration and pledge, I am proud to introduce a lady who you all probably know from the Ocala Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. The Ocala Chapter DAR is a group of patriotic women who champion making a difference in our schools. As you well know, they're vibrant, they're enthusiastic, and they love serving our schools to actively preserve American history and work to secure America's future through their dedication to education for children. At this time, it brings me great pleasure to invite Ms. Elizabeth Coleman, Ocala Chapter Regent, to lead us in the inspiration and pledge.
Madam Superintendent and School Board Members, in the mid nineteen fifty's, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned the U.S. Congress to pass a bill proclaiming September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. That bill was passed by the U.S. Congress in both houses, and President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed it into law. The law also calls for citizens and public school students to read the document during the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third. In an effort to celebrate Constitution Week, September seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, your local chapter, the Ocala Chapter National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, raised the money and purchased Constitution booklets for two thousand Marion County Public School fifth graders in twenty-four of your elementary schools. It's our sincere hope that the students will enjoy the booklets, engage with its contents, and discover the genius of our living document, the Constitution of the United States. In addition, we provided materials to schools and to fifth-grade teachers, including a sample school proclamation, individual I will read the Constitution proclamations for fifth-grade students, and Constitution Minutes, which are collective vast facts about the Constitution that fifth-grade teachers can use in their classrooms. The Ocala Chapter NSDAR extends our warmest wishes for a successful twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We'd like to thank you, the school board, Superintendent, the teachers, and support staff at every one of our Marion County Public Schools, for the dedication that you serve with to the students and to the families in this community. We realize that educating the next generation of citizens and voters is of the utmost importance. We thank you for accepting that challenge. And again, we wish you and your students a most prosperous school year. Now, would you please rise and join me as we say the Pledge Allegiance to the American Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman and the Daughters of American Revolution, for your donation to those fifth graders. I'm sure they'll cherish their copies of the Constitution. Ms. Barber, up to you one more time.
So, at this time, I take extreme pride in introducing the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Social Studies Teachers of the Year. The Social Studies Teacher of the Year program is organized by the Florida Council for Social Studies to bring attention and recognition to our dedicated social studies teachers across the state of Florida. The nomination process took place in May, and anyone in the community, including non-school employees such as parents and students, were encouraged to nominate teachers. A panel of community members worked over the summer to read the nominations and select tonight's recipients. So, our first recipient is Ms. Casey Miller of Saddlewood Elementary School. She was nominated by her coworker. She was nominated by her coworker, Ms. Jessica Hendricks. On the nation form, Ms. Hendricks described Ms. Miller's fifth-grade social studies instruction as amazing and really brings history to life. Ms. Miller does a phenomenal job at integrating current events and social studies content into her reading block to promote content area literacy. In addition, she brings a wealth of knowledge to our weekly grade-level collaborations. So, this is for you, if you want to come stand right up here. Yes, right there. Ms. Jennifer Sutton is our middle school social studies teacher of the year. She teaches seventh-grade civics at Osceola Middle School. Ms. Sutton was nominated by both her principal and one of her students. Mr. Coff describes her as a teacher mentor, a strong collaborator with a model classroom. Her student described her as a teacher who promotes social studies education by making us understand how important civics truly is. She teaches us about political parties, voting, and responsibilities and obligations of American citizens. She's kind and amazing and shapes students into becoming amazing American citizens. Those were direct quotes from the student nomination form. So, this is for you. Thank you. Our high school social studies teacher of the year is Mr. Hawkins of Donellen High School. He was nominated by coworkers Deborah Vasquez and Rick Hafner. His colleagues describe him as an invaluable asset to the social studies department at Donellen High School, who really works to develop students' content area reading skills. Even though he's a veteran teacher, he's always open to new ideas and approaches, as he is constantly seeking to improve his teaching through interactive lessons and connect the subject matter to real-life current events and experiences for high schoolers. Additionally, he's been involved in coaching athletics and is fully invested in helping students achieve their goals and set them on a path to success. You're welcome. Go on up. All three teachers will be recognized at the Florida Council for the Social Studies Conference on October fifteenth at the Florida Hotel and Conference Center in Orlando. So, thank you very much. It's truly my pleasure to work with you all in social studies, and I've been in your classrooms, and I know the amazing work, and I think you're all very wonderful representatives for the social studies teachers in our district.
You want to go take pictures? Yes, let's go do that.
Um, I think the board's going to come down. If you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. See, that wasn't so bad.
Thank you so much. Superintendent Dr. Gollit, I understand you would like to introduce and recognize a staff member.
I certainly do. Good evening, Chair Cummings, members of the board. Great to see you this evening. It is great pleasure that I have this, tonight, to finally get to introduce you to one of our new principals, who's really not new anymore. He's been quite busy in, at work. Mr. Jason Jacobs is up here in the front, who is now the proud principal of Lake Ware Middle. Little bit of background on Mr. Jacobs, he actually graduated from Forest High School right here in Marion County, and he joined us as a teacher in two thousand eleven, served at Fort King Middle School, then moved on to Lake Ware High School, serving in various roles, was assistant principal, most recently as the assistant principal of curriculum at Vanguard High School. And I could just tell you again, he is a, technically a new principal, but has already been hard at work doing amazing things at Lake Ware Middle School. So, we are quite proud of all the work we're doing, and welcome to Mr. Jacobs. I do want to make a personal addition as well. No, his dad is here. He is in the back, and his father also proudly served Marion County some years ago as a deputy superintendent, so comes from a strong line of educators. So, thank you.
He got to come up. He got to. Only one thing, he's just going to sit there the whole time. So, come on, guys, let's go do this one. Pastor Jacobs, you come on down too with your side.
And I want to add, if I may, the man is a scholar in science and math. So, how about that?
Hey, Jason.
He left.
He's gone.
He's gone. He's.
Okay. I did want y'all to hear what they did say, that he was a wildcat. Y'all did hear that, right? He was a forest wildcat, okay? All right. Thank you. Superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening again. I recommend approval of the agenda for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D eighteen point one and D eighteen point two that have been placed under discussion, and items C seven point one, C seven point three, C eight point one, C eight point two, C eight point three, C eight point four, C nine point one, C ten point one, C eleven point one, C thirteen point three, and C sixteen point two that have been pulled and placed under discussion.
Thanks, Superintendent. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Throer.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poll has the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Cameron.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Browning. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes. I, uh... I, I have a, a comment to make on it. As I consider the minutes to be the visual and oral record that's taken, that's produced during our meetings, that should be the final. I, I consider that to be the minutes, and I've checked with Tallahassee on this. I would like to see a correction of the, of the list. It's not that important, but it's technical. There's a list on comments that is severely lacking. It's not the entire minutes, of course, because the, the visual and audio and the additional audio stands on its own. However, I think it, from a correctness point of view, it'd be very important if, if those... And I looked down through several, just looked back through several, and that portion, that listing at the bottom of the minutes has been pretty routinely incomplete or not representative of what actually took place. So, it doesn't really jeopardize our operation. We do have our minutes. We do have our visual and oral record. However, I do think it's important in terms of an actual longstanding comment in the minutes.
Ready vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign.
No.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July twenty-one, twenty twenty-two special school board meeting? Received, tenanted budget.
Same move.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Throer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. I'm now asked the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board today.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section two eight six point oh one one of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter related to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name. If you wish for us to follow up with contact, please state your address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided twenty-four hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator or staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, excluding expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students is also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, we have anybody?
We do. Victoria Kirby.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Victoria Kirby. My last name is spelled K-I-R-B-Y. I actually wanted to come and address you guys tonight in regards to the fact that the students are not allowed to use lockers at the school. I am new to Marion County. I've only been here six years, so I do not know when the policy was put into effect, but I have a current student in high school. And I would like to urge and encourage you guys to possibly amend or change this rule. And the reason being is my daughter in high school is carrying around this seventeen point five-pound backpack with no textbooks in it. It's all the required binders, folders, Chromebook needed for their classes, and nowhere to store these objects going class to class to class. You're asking these children to put seventeen to twenty pounds on their back, furthering, injuring themselves for other injuries that they already have. One, my daughter, on crutches currently right now, can't even carry this because the weight of her backpack over the past couple of years in middle school has caused further damage to a knee injury from soccer. And I just think that it's very unfair to these students to have to do this, and I'm asking that you guys reconsider this. I understand that I've heard from other parents that have been in the school district for a long time that it's a safety issue. To me, it's safer to have a backpack in a locker and have them carry books to class than carrying this around where they could possibly conceal the weapon that you don't want them to have on school grounds, along with any other items that they should not have with them. That's all.
Thank you. Would you like contact information?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Gollit, is there someone here that can address?
Yes, thank you. I was going to ask if I could, Ms... Dr. Livinggood is in the back on behalf of Mr. Frazier, and if you would, Ms. Kirby, go ahead, and she will stand up and meet you back there to help.
Thank you.
She oversees secondary with Mr. Frazier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby.
Thank you.
Superintendent, may I have some contact information on her, please?
You can get it from Mr. Davis.
Certainly, we'll provide it to you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dominic Antonaccio the second.
Good evening. My name's Dominic Antonaccio. It's A-N-T-O-N.
Sir, can't hear you? Yeah, thank you.
My name is Dominic Antonaccio. I am the father of two students at Fesiden Elementary School, one of which is my five-year-old autistic son, Dominic. This year, they're in a new school with familiar teachers, and the second week of school, in a classroom with four students and three teachers, Dominic got out of his classroom. He was unnoticed. Eight minutes passed before other students found him on the other side of campus. His teachers never knew he was missing, never reported him gone. After this, me and my wife agreed that the school needs some kind of oversight, and we called DCF to have them conduct an investigation, find out what happened, give them some help, some information. Four days later, my son got out of his class again. This time, he was on the car line. Staff responds, he's too fast. We couldn't catch him. But he made it through the school grounds to a perimeter fence, through the gate without anybody catching him. Made it all the way to the car line. Somebody finally catches him. They take him to the infirmary because he's all banged up from falling, running around, jumping into this. Sorry, won't happen again. After the second time, spoke with the principal. She told me that she's doing everything she can, sending emails to board members, officials, et cetera. She also told me that the return email has somebody else's name on it because she retires in four days. With that, me and my wife fell. This isn't her concern, doesn't care at all. Last night, I went to the open house and asked his teachers where they were when my son went missing unnoticed. Teacher shrugged her shoulders. Sorry. Went on with excuses. I was in the restroom. I was changing a diaper. There's three teachers in a room with four special needs students, and you don't notice one of them's missing. Okay? When I went to the open house last night, windows in the classroom were smashed out, boarded up with cardboard and plywood and two-by-fours, silicone, plastic, not even a care what happened to the windows. It's not your concern. It doesn't involve your child. Okay? Asked the principal, what's going on with the windows in the classroom? This isn't okay. Oh, we're going to board them up completely. Don't worry about it. Last week, I reached out to Mrs. King. We spoke for a little while, and I know you guys are busy. You guys got a lot going on and shouldn't be to this point. The school should be able to handle a matter like this, except they don't care. Reached out to the superintendent, no call back. My son's life is in danger at this school. Staff doesn't seem to be concerned. Their recommendations are to homeschool him, the five-year-old autistic son who is nonverbal. I'm not sending him to school and expecting him to come home knowing advanced math. He's going for a social atmosphere, for an interaction, to be with people, to be around other... Other things, to learn more, to pick up anything he can. other things, to learn more, to pick up anything he can. I don't expect him to not get hurt, not get bumped, not get bruised, but I expect him to be safe, and he's not. He cannot go to school. That's all I have to say, guys.
Can you say something? Go ahead.
Yes. Not that we would discuss anything here, but I do know that either Ms. Keiner or Ms. Barb Dobbins could probably speak to you about your concerns. I think on some of it, they're probably still trying to gather some information. But if you can reach out to Ms. Keiner back there, maybe she could be of assistance right now.
Mr. Antonacci, we appreciate you coming and letting us know your concerns. And somebody's going to address you before you leave here tonight. Okay?
Thank you.
And sir, reach out to the board. You can reach out to this board member, and please do, I hope you will.
I, I'm at a loss. My son is five years old, he loves school. But if you have three teachers in a room with four kids and you can't keep him safe, you can't even count the four between three years. I can't send him to school when he stays home. It's not right.
Thank you, mister.
Chair.
Yes.
Sir, I also wanted to say thank you for coming before us tonight. This is the first that I've heard of this situation. And as a lifelong advocate and teacher of students with special needs like your son.
He doesn't deserve this.
No one does. But my point is, is that it's having an IEP meeting, making sure that your child is safe at school and that you're confident in his placement is a non-negotiable.
We have the IEP meetings routinely where weeks into school, they routinely ignore it and don't even care. They have issues on the bus since day one. I've had other parents approach me and say, hey, we stopped your son from getting off the bus at Arst. There's an attendant, there's a safety seat, there's a bus driver. How is he not in his seat? Because you guys aren't doing your job, you're not doing what's right.
Mr. Antonacci, give us an opportunity. See those ladies right there, please, see those, see those ladies right there at the back and give them opportunity to.
Now we know.
And, and the information is very helpful because it helps with other situations that can come up. We have a lot of students. And I know I have gotten extremely good results directing problems like this straight to the superintendent. And to other resources, but straight to the superintendent. And so it's, it's, it's there's a positive future, and we do solve problems.
We do solve problems, but it shouldn't have to go straight to.
Shouldn't have to, shouldn't.
It should be resolved before it ever gets to the superintendent. Mr. Davis?
James Lee Elmore.
Good evening, everybody. My name is James Elmore, E-L-M-O-R-E. I live at 794 Northwest 52nd Court, Ocala, Florida. I've been teaching in this district 18 years now. And I've come before you for a problem that I've addressed to the school board via email previously. And the only people I heard back from are Ms. Thora and Ms. King. I still haven't seen the board take any action either, so I'm here to talk to you. 2018, the University of Florida did a study that showed that when we send report cards home on Fridays, child abuse goes up fourfold on the following Saturday. Fourfold, people, all right? And Florida already has a problem with child abuse. We need to stop sending report cards home on Fridays, it's that simple. I would like to see you create a board policy that report cards go home on Mondays to give those parents as much lead time between Monday and the weekend as possible to get whatever immature they got to get out of their system so that they're not beating on their kids over their grades. It's a pretty simple solution. No reason what we can't get it done. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, mister. Mr. Elmore.
You all have a good evening.
Mr. Davis?
That's all, sir.
That is. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve consenting agenda items C. 7.1 through C. 17.5 with the exception of items D. 18.1 and D. 18.2 that have been placed on discussion in items C. 7.1, C. 7.3, C. 8.1, C. 8.2, C. 8.3, C. 8.4, C. 9.1, C. 10.1, C. 11.1, C. 13.3, and C. 16.2 that have been pulled and placed on discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thora. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Marion Education Support Professionals and the school board of Marion County, 2021, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the New Florida Electrical Association Inc. Apprenticeship Training Program Agreement?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thora. Seconded by Board Member King, any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same signs, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve grant application, Governor's Emergency Education Relief G.E.E.R. Fund under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act 2021, published L.N.O. 116-260 Open Door Grant Program. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, you pull this one for discussion?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. Yes, the a key item, and I know we've talked about this before, so I want to clear it up. The idea of a government limit or a management limit on items in the consent agreement, consent agenda. And the requirement of consent before an item goes into the consent agenda. And it may sound simple, but it's they do they do not have my consent. Often, I've never even seen them prior to them going on the agenda. And so these are, this is $100,000. And we went to, or rather, the press, the Gazette, Ocala Gazette and the Ocala Star Banner went to the various government agencies. And, and a limit was established, which was $100,000. Now typically, it was below that that items would no longer fit into Robert's Rules Consent Agenda, which is for small, routine, simple things. We're continually doing this where they go into the no, non-discussion compartment, if you will, to be only approved. That's it. And so once that happens, if you weren't privy to the discussion beforehand and you weren't privy to the to a possible, but maybe not, discussion at a workshop, there is no discussion. And so that's why I've pulled this. Now, it's from the Department of Education, I'm in favor of it. We need to get this type of item out before the public because that's why we're here as a board. This is workforce education program, I think it's great. I applaud the Department of Education for putting it forward. I abhor the idea of it going into a non-discussion. People need to hear this, that it's out there, it exists, we have funding for it. It's a, this is an application for a grant for it, it could change lives. So that's why I pulled this out, I am happy with it. I would like also to see our people internally, we have thousands of experts. And I would like to see them benefit to be our experts rather than spend the money out, often out of the district and often out of the county, out of the state even. So that was the reason that I pulled this item, it's $100,000. Far too large to be, ever go forward without discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed, have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Perkins v. Perkins Five, Post-Secondary Section 132 Entitlement Fiscal Year 2022-2023?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, you pull this one for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, the same type situation, we can be real quick with this, but it gets it out in the open. And if any of my fellow board members want to discuss something that's over $100,000. This is, this is $138,000. And just at, at the very least, often we think about being against things. At the very least, it's why are we for it? What is it doing to help us? Often quite a bit. And can we use local talent? That's, that's a theme. We have a huge base of incredibly qualified, intelligent teachers and others, administrative staff. And these people can all apply for something like this. And we can use that money locally. And a bonus is that we, we then own the material, which is a, it's a side bonus. It's $138,000 plus. And yes, we want to enhance existing post-education programs, absolutely. But let's talk about these things, especially when it hits that kind of, that kind of money and has that kind of an impact on education. Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Just to clear up any confusion that may be about this particular item. This is a grant application that we are going to receive this money. And once this money is received, it will be used to purchase technology, equipment, materials, and supplies specifically for our career and technical education programs. Certainly, some of those dollars could be used to purchase supplies right here in Marion County, that is possible. But some of the information that was just shared, I just want to ensure that we're not confusing matters on what this particular item is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve agreement with Top Score Writing Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Mr. Brown, you pull this one as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The same issues apply when you're spending rather large sums of money. It's, and, and yes, we do get involved in materials. We also get involved in digital, as in this situation, digital items which can change and have an exceptionally short life. And I believe that we should be aware of this. We should use our people internally, we should use our people locally. Often, software can be updated on a regular basis. I have a car that gets updated like once every two weeks or sometimes twice a week over the internet. So it's, it's the kind of thing that we've got to stay on our game. I don't like going down to Palm Beach for something like this that we can do internally. We, we seem to repeat these, these situations on a regular basis. And I'm sure they're great, but there's, there's, there's an element. When we have great teachers and something gets imposed from above that is canned. I, I'm not saying that it couldn't be beneficial, I'm not saying that it isn't beneficial. But I'm saying that real-life teacher like we've all had, everybody's sitting here. We had real teachers, we had a chalkboard. We might have had something that came in a slideshow or something that came on a, on a TV, depending on how far back we go. But I, the teachers know best. I want to see a, a steering of the ship back toward our thousands, 5,000 or so individuals that might qualify to do this work in-house. And that way, we keep up with it, I think we get more bang for the buck. And $175,000 cannot possibly go without the people hearing something about it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed, have the same sign. May I have a motion to approve memorandum of understanding with the University of Florida Board of Trustees?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull this one as well?
Thank you, Chair, yes, I did. This is the, this is the University of Florida. And it's a absolute home run, cannot be put in a consent agenda and then not, not spoken to. I'll, if I'm the only one that speaks to it, then so be it. But this is absolutely a home run with the university. They put forward incredible scientists that will come forward, they build, they collaborate, they help. It's absolutely a home run. These are real scientists, these are real, this is state-of-the-art. And we've gone out, and I love to catch an organization, especially a governmental organization, doing something right. We have gone out and secured this with the University of Florida. And it is a home run. So I just want to recognize the university and recognize the district and the superintendent for having this relationship and supporting it. And this is the kind of thing that I absolutely, I'll only be on the board for a few more months. But going forward, this puts the train on the tracks. I want to see things like this, at least for my input, things like this enhanced. Because there's an awful lot of this that we can do that has a zero financial impact, but absolutely impacts lives. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve special data share agreement with Accelerate Learning Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull this for discussion?
Thank you, Chair, yes, I did. Again, over the limit, no discussion, doesn't have consent. We've got to get this back, get this program going. The state looks at management and mismanagement. And I believe that if you don't discuss things like this and you go out of the district, for example, it may be that we can't handle it here locally. But we do have qualified teachers, I believe we can handle everything in this accelerated learning system. It's about science, I believe we've got, I believe we could handle every bit of this locally. This is $125,000. And I want to see, at least for my part of the, my district, I want to see us hire our qualified people for applications like this, or at least try. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
No, I'm sorry, it's a no for me, thank you.
Nays have the same sign?
Uh, no.
Pass this 4-1. May I have a motion to approve special data share agreement with Studies Weekly Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Mr. Brown, you pull this item for discussion?
Yes, for similar, similar reasons. This is $175,000 in a consent agenda, which is for small, routine items. I don't know about anybody else, but it took me is for small routine items. I don't know about anybody else, but it took me years at some stages of my life to make $175,000. It's over the limit. It's, I believe we can handle this item internally. I believe that we could build this. And if we built it internally, we would own it. I get very excited every time we do one of these. At $175,000, you do the math, pretty soon we're running out of money. And then we want to go out and get more money. And I say that any organization I'm associated with, management, the key to management is to do your core duty, which is the education of our children, our students, and to do it in a fiscally responsible way. So I am not in favor of going out. Where this one is located, I failed to note it, somewhere in Utah, somewhere in California, somewhere in, I think Indianapolis. We must, I think, be more careful with something $175,000 we can do in-house. That's just, that's just the way I see it. I believe that that is proper management. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Pass this 4-1. May I have a motion to approve agreement with Targeted Leadership Consulting Incorporated?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thor.
Second.
Second about Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull this as well?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yes, I did. This is, this is the California rendition. If you would, just replay my earlier comments. We don't need to go to California experts for something like this. It is a developing leadership, improving student achievement through direct training. I believe if we did this locally, we would continually grow and develop our capabilities. This is, this is an opportunity to manage and to manage well. I believe we can do this in-house. I don't see any reason to go out. And while it doesn't cross the $100,000 level, it is $85,000. And I would like to see this kind of consulting be from our experts. We could probably go head-to-head with this group and, and excel over what they have to offer. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Pass this 4-1. May I have a motion to approve agreement with Project Lead the Way Inc. Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Second about Board Member McKean. Mr. Brown, you pull this for discussion?
Yes, thank you Chair. The, again, this is at the government limit. The $100,000 has to be discussed. I want our staff to know about this. Just look on, look on board docs, listen. They can call, they can get involved. This is, we go to Indianapolis for this. I would like to see if we don't immediately change. I would like to see us work toward that, building it in-house. And when you have a contracts not to exceed, it drives, it, it, it flies in the face of stewardship of funds. Typically, an item like that will be spent all the way up to and including that limit. I don't, I don't buy that. I don't like the idea. I want teachers to be hired or at least considered. And I'd like our teachers, there'd be no, no repercussions. I think you can step up and some of the big numbers, this is $100,000. We've, we've already talked about over a million dollars. I believe we can really light the candle. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Pass this 4-1. May I have a motion to approve agreement with Blackboard Website and Community Management Systems, WCM?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Brown?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I did, I did put this back up on the table. Again, it's, you can see the pattern here. We've got, this is $93,000. So I rounded off at my limit, which is over $10, $50,000. But it's, it's so near the governmental level that it needs to be addressed. I vote that we look deeper than this. This particular, where is this one? Well, this is, this is, technology changes. It was approved in 2019, 2020, 2021. Now it's likely to be approved in 2022. And I believe that we can do better. But we must discuss it. We have to look deeper into this and see how we can do it and how we can apply it locally. And, you know, be, be better managers. Manage, don't mismanage. It's a sacred duty to be a steward of funds. Thank you Chair.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you Chair. This specific item, I will speak to because it is specifically the website and all of our subsequent websites that our school district has. While the price tag may seem high at around $100,000, I assure you, if we went to an individual, potentially local company and/or company in the state of Florida even, that wasn't specialized in having school district websites, we would be paying more. This particular company offers templates and more support for websites specifically for school districts. Because they have the bandwidth, because they have the expertise, because they have the knowledge and have created useful tools for school districts, that's why this has continued to be approved year after year. And it has been very helpful for all of our community to see the robust information that we have available on our websites, not just the district site, but also each of the individual school pages. And that is why we continue to approve this line item year after year. I'm ready to vote.
Board Member Thor?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I am all about entrepreneurship. I am all about doing things in-house. I am all about encouraging our students to, to notice opportunities and figure out a way to make things better. There, there's also something in an organization of our size that's called protected information and vulnerabilities to having protected information hacked and, and held hostage. And as I was reviewing this, I noticed that it was Blackboard. And, and Blackboard is also used by the University of Mississippi, for example, which is where one of my sons graduated from. And there is power in bulk buying. So while I agree with the opinions that you're sharing, I'm not sure I agree with the ability for us to apply what you've been talking about to our organization. And I'm also wondering, this is very important conversation, and, and it's obviously a source of huge importance to you. And, and I'm just wondering, you know, what have you found out through talking to staff? You know, what is, what is the history on this? You know, how did, how did we get here? Because I feel like there's a lot of assumptions being made and being shared out tonight that may or may not have substantive rationale. And while I applaud a lot of the things that you're saying in theory, it's also really important when things are being brought out publicly at a public school board meeting, that there's substance behind the statements. That's all I have, and I'm ready to vote.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, thank you. And I'm elated that, that there is discussion. This is absolutely, I believe, the key to management as compared to mismanagement. You must discuss. And I, I'll answer your question in saying, I do have history, business entrepreneurial history. One time we were in excess of 600 websites. Websites are slam dunk, solid and strong and secure, always can be. Website technology is constantly changing. And that's where I want to be. As a board member, if it's Ford Motor Company, I don't go down and worry about putting wheels on the cars. What I do concern myself with is fundamental sound practices that we have this, we have this grand jury out of the state, which is looking at feasance, malfeasance, management, mismanagement, fiscal responsibility. We're, we're looking at these things, and we've got such a great, heavy burden if you're on a board. 600 websites, I guarantee you, we made a lot of money. And we were nowhere near these numbers. And I currently have sites up that are multi-multi-page. And they're appropriate for the use. The key is, we've got talent right here. And I don't have to be right. All I want to do is bring up the point and then discuss it. And I believe that's what happens in a business meeting, a board meeting. That's the level. And we've got great minds here. And that's what I want to hear. I don't want to be right. I want to be involved in the discussion. And I absolutely do not want it to go, an item this important, to go into a, a, getting a phone call, that shut off. Technology is amazing. I do not want to get, have something from 1919, 2019, still go through without discussion in 2022, in something that changes totally in that period of time, for the most part. Thank you Chair.
Are we ready to vote? Attorney Powers?
I will just add a comment that is useful, I think, from, or I hope, from the legal department here. When it comes to websites, if you're in private industry and you do a website, it's different. It's easy. Put up your own, have it how you want. When it comes to accessibility for the public, for public notices, for public information, things get a little trickier. Then on top of that, ADA compliance. There are requirements specifically that websites be ADA accessible and compliant for, for example, blind individuals who wish to use a reader. If that doesn't happen, we run into problems. Specifically, you can ask City of Ocala in 2019, we're sued for exactly that kind of problem with their website. And it is, it's very easy for a person who is subject to ADA protection to look at that and say, this website, which is a public website, is non-compliant. It's also for people who, for anyone who wishes to know, they can easily access and find out whether it's compliant or not. And being able to have someone who, throughout the contract that's negotiated with them, not only maintains a website and maintains the integrity of it, but also pays attention to a number of these factors that we have to do that are in common with many other governmental agencies as well, is, is crucial and important. So there are elements that extend beyond, you know, we can get, my nephew Jimmy, who knows about a website, I'm not saying anybody said that here, but, you know, having individual private folks and small businesses do a website for a government entity, there can be risks involved. And you don't know where the mines are unless you step on them once. And when you do that, it's usually too late. So I will note that I had reviewed Blackboard's website and community management system information to ensure that some of these things are considered in, in that agreement, and they are. And that makes me, as your advisor, comfortable to recommend that that is the appropriate course of action.
Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Chair?
Ms. Thor?
Thank you, Attorney Powers, and thank you Chair. Yes, that's probably one of my biggest frustrations with working on a school board sometimes, is that, you know, there's this desire to be innovative and, and match to the private sector. And we just have entirely different constraints. Not that that means by a long shot that, that we ever give up looking for opportunities to be more innovative. I think that's a huge part of our strategic plan, and we're putting that in action. But to compare like it's apples to apples, you know, business to operating public education, papers over our challenges.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you Chair. Okay, always you want to, you want to choose. If you're spending close to $100,000, you want to make a choice. And this company is private enterprise. And private enterprise is always, always equal to or superior to government. With the exception of Navy SEALs, Marine Corps, Air Force, US Army, I will always go with free enterprise and always be a steward of funds. And yes, always meet the highest standards before a contract is let. I kind of question letting these things with exactly what the, what the attorney was indicating, from 19, 2019 sliding on up. How do we even know? And so for this board member, I love this level of discussion because I think we are ahead of when we sat down and didn't have this exchange. This is absolutely incredibly important, and it's what we swore to do when we said we would serve the duties of a school board member. Thank you Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Pass this 4-1. May I have a motion to approve Reject RFP 3940 GM Sound System Supply and Installation Services?
Motion to approve the reject?
Second.
Motion by Board Member Thor, seconded by Board Member Brown. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled this one for discussion?
Uh, yes, I did. Thank you. This is, this is a beautiful rose blossoming in the garden. This is what we try to achieve in pulling an item where we put out 305 requests, and we have one vendor come back with a proposal. That is a fiscal disaster. And I thank the staff, I thank the employees, and anyone who had a part in pulling this back and indicating that it needed to be rethought, reevaluated, re-advertized. I spent my, I spent the best part of a half-century in business. And if you can ever get the specs adjusted so that suddenly you're the only one that can perform something, perform a duty or supply a product. We had a company We had a company in the printing world that took a standard form when I was in business and changed the gap where the plates would be set on the press, made it a three-eighths gap, remember this clearly? And the whole industry is set with a half-inch, or let's say a three-eighths, and they did a half-inch. It was, it was just an eighth below in size, and they had expanded the copy to the edges of the paper, a sixteenth of an inch on either side. No one could compete. We went out and actually modified a press to be able to handle this, and we were able to underbid the thing. It was just so far, but we were able to get in the game, and we saved the state a fortune. So I applaud our, our people for getting into this. We've got to, we've got to do a better job. This is probably one of 50 I've seen where we send out 300, 400, 500 requests. We've got to do a better job analyzing, breaking that down, getting the job done. This is a start. This is an absolute home run. So congratulations on a start toward reforming our RFP system. Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I spent some time today speaking with Mr. Collins and Purchasing specifically about this item, and while I appreciate the robust opinions that have been shared on this particular item, and congratulations to the team for rejecting it, I'm grateful for the work that Purchasing does and what they're trying to do, but on this particular item, frankly, there are not enough companies that supply what we need. And Mr. Christian is shaking his head yes. If you are a company, local or otherwise, that provides sound equipment and sound technical maintenance, please apply for these RFPs. The reason we are rejecting this one is not because of some amazing process that went, it's because we only got one bid and we didn't like it. And that's what we do whenever we're trying to do what's best for our students and what's best for our schools. We have some outdated equipment, outdated sound systems. We have auditoriums that were built many, many years ago, and the sound systems are original. Even in this building, they had to do a lot of work in here for us to be able to be in here and do what we're doing. So again, while I appreciate the robust discussion that's occurring on this particular rejection, this item, frankly, we need sound equipment and sound technicians who can do maintenance on sound equipment, to please apply. Mr. Collins and his team researched companies, asking them, please, will you apply? We can't force private business to apply for these things, but if you are interested in working with the school district and you provide these services, we need them. And so we're ready to hire someone to do what we need. And the challenge here is that we just haven't had enough people that provide these services. We're not in a large market like Orlando, or Tampa, or Miami, where these people are frequently around. We are a small market for this particular item, and so again, I understand why we're rejecting it, and certainly am ready to vote on that, but I just wanted to add that context to this specific item. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Close have the same sign? Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve job description for Coordinator One, School Choice 1.29?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Ms. Brown, can you pull this one as well?
No, this one, is this the job description?
I'm sorry. Ms. Campbell, you pull this one, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Board, I pulled it.
We got, we got a pattern.
No, yes, no, I understand. It was a pattern. No, I pulled this item, and it is for the sole purpose of, I understand, the importance to get these absolutely perfect before we post them. So my hope is, Board, that we can make a minor correction to this item and approve it amended tonight so that it can be posted tomorrow. If you happen to have the item in front of you, it is the one, two, three, four, five, sixth bullet down in the job description that specifically speaks to preparing targeted marketing promotional campaign notices, including digital and social media. And in speaking with all the team and everyone involved, they all knew I was doing this, but that specific item needs to say, in coordination...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's the sixth bullet.
Start us with the number of the item.
This is item, it was originally item number 13 point, excuse me, 16.2.
16.
16.2, and it was pulled. Okay, it is the job description for Coordinator One for School Choice. Bullet number six, one, two, three, four, five, six. Prepare general targeted marketing and promotional campaign notices, et cetera. It needs to read, in coordination with communications and public relations, and then the rest. Because what has occurred, and, and I'll mention this in my board comments, when we need to post a job description for someone who has been in that role for a very long time, what the previous employee had done all the time was work with public relations and communication on preparing these materials. But when you're posting a job description for someone new to come in, if they don't know that they should be coordinating with communications and public relations so that all of our materials have the same look and feel, then they may go off and do what their job description says, to go off and prepare their own things without that coordination with communications and public relations. So in speaking with Mr. Ayers, and speaking with Mr. Christian, speaking with Ms. DeBick, speaking with Mr. Green, this frankly was just an oversight. That is what they intended for it to say, but it doesn't say that right now. So if we could approve it amending that one little section to say, in coordination with communications and public relations, and then prepare general targeted marketing, so that they're working together and collaboratively on that particular item of this job.
So you're asking that we amend this job description to add to bullet six?
Correct.
And, say it again?
In coordination with communications and public relations.
I'm comfortable with that, Chair. If, and I'd like to hear, can we do that at, at the meeting?
We can, we can approve an amended job description. I mean, that's, we're making the amendment to it. I don't see that we would...
I'm comfortable with the amendment.
Because they do need to get this job posted. So I mean, I, I really would hate for this one issue to hold this up for another month, but...
I'd like to make a motion to approve this job description with the amendment so eloquently stated by Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. I second it.
Motion to amend this item has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Close have the same sign. So motion to approve the amended job description for Coordinator One has been approved.
Thank you.
Unanimously. Thank you. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on September 15th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the school improvement plan for McIntosh Area Charter School, the student progression plan, one of two, and 2022, 2023 state and district assessment updates, human resources and transportation updates, and 2022, 2023 Florida Safe Schools Assessment, Tools Update and Recommendation. A special administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for September 23rd, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of this work session is to discuss Neola policy updates. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on October 6th, 2022. Purpose of the work session is to discuss achieved 2026 proposed revision and learning management system updates. All right, more concerns. Mr. Davis, any...
Nothing, sir.
Any comments? Attorney Powers?
I have nothing further, sir.
Okay. Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. Members of the board, again, just briefly, we are very pleased to participate as a district in the Hispanic Heritage Month, which begins September 15th and runs through October 15th. The Florida Department of Education with Volunteer Florida have provided several ways that our students from kindergarten through 12th grade can, can participate and recognize and celebrate the achievements of our Hispanic Floridians. We have a student art contest for kindergarten through third-grade students. We have a student essay contest that begins in fourth grade, going all the way through our 12th grade students. We have different speakers coming in, spotlighting the tremendous impact in our classrooms of our Hispanic families. And so I do want to say, and I think this is really important, that while it's Hispanic Heritage Month, we value and appreciate the diversity of all of our educators, staff members, and students all year long, but did want to highlight some of the, the ways that we are recognizing their tremendous impact in our, in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, Superintendent, there's a, there's something, I, I started, golly, back in mid-'50s, and that is learning languages. And I, I'd just like to say that whenever I get the opportunity, like with Spanish, I had some folks come up at our recent, one of our recent meetings, and I will immediately try to engage them in Spanish. Yo habla, español poquito, no muy bien, you know, that type of thing. And, and yes, I butcher languages, but I kind of do it, I, I accept that risk. And I love, I, I just celebrate how hard some of the Hispanic folks have worked to learn English. And I love that, and that's, that's their goal, and I got that, but I love going back in the other direction because it enriches everything. Absolutely. And same thing with Japanese, a little bit of Parle Vu Francais, Spacen Sie Deutsch if you can do it, and you never, ever are the fool. You feel like it because you really can't do the job, but that doesn't matter. Everyone speaking a language, if they're fluent in it, is your dictionary, and they will work, they will work with you. So thank you, Superintendent, that's, I'm glad that you brought that forward. And it's an opportunity everybody can have every day, as much as they, as they want, especially if they can get involved, if, if, if that other party is there. Take advantage of it if they are. Thank you, Chair.
If you at least try, then they'll save you.
Pardon me?
If you at least try to speak the language, they'll save you.
Oh, they'll, they'll bring you along, yes. And, and now were you saying it was my opportunity, my comment time?
When you shared that, I...
Okay. Okay, okay, thanks. I was following on, Superintendent, but now, yes, okay, I'll, let me slide over. So I would like to address for a moment our, we've, we've got something coming up, and I'm, I'm, I'm working with it, I'm, I'm grinding through our inter-local agreement, our, the suggestions that are out there. I know Board Member Thor has brought back comments, but I believe we need to really, really dig in to this on a workshop level, on a real, regular basis. Because if we don't, we are going to get to the crux of the situation and be at a disadvantage. And when you are, I, I can tell you, if you ever slip, it's almost impossible to get back, get the train back up on the tracks, if you'll allow me a metaphor, that the, in, in digging through this, we have beautiful arguments around the county. We've got retirement areas that they're doing their part. They don't bring a lot of children into the county, they bring a huge amount of wealth. We benefit from that. I get that argument, and I'm very sympathetic to it. I also understand how generous people are. They always want to do their part. I mean, they really do. Look, just make sure you get the kids educated, we'll send you the money. Make sure they do, you get the kids educated, I'm going to go play some golf, that kind of thing. Because they're at a point in their life where they're willing to do it, and they've earned their way. But we've got to take and, we've got to dig into this at every workshop, I believe. If we do, we'll be up on it. And if you go through this, it, it hits the nail on the head with something I've pushed since I've been on board and, and for the last 20 years, and that is the abomination down at the segregated school that was built in 1956, dedicated in '56, built in '55, under Brown versus Board of Education. It was, it was segregated, and things did not go well with the roads, with the sidewalks. Even the stop sign's not there, and we still have that. But when we, when I go through this, and if we can't get, if we can't get something right that's, that's been there for 65 years, if we can't get that right, like a stop sign, and I use that stop sign like a flag, just to wave it to say, come on, school safety, everything goes into school safety, every bus passes in front of that, going one way and in the other direction going the other, and there isn't even a stop sign there where the road comes in. And the reason is, we don't want to have recognition that it's a road. Well, it was a road back in 1904, and we have quitclaim the deed to an error that was made back when the clock, when the, when the title to that road was clouded, kind of in a funny way, just by a surveyor. Obviously can't, we quitclaimed it, but now we got to get behind actually doing safety. We held a little meeting of some, you know, I wasn't there, I wish I'd have been invited, I would have let it without question, but we must, we must do with our current situation what is proper. And if we do, then we have a right then to go forward and, and demand that we have the funding, that we have these agreements, and that it's appropriate. Out in West Marion County, for example, there are a lot more need for schools. In other areas, there are not. And, and perhaps this year, when the legislature meets, we will see a lot of charter-type schools coming available through corporations simply because people are going to be able, and it's my prediction, you can go play the tape a year from now, but it's my prediction that the people will take their, now it's about $20,000 if you divide the student population, which has been laying flat by the budget. So they're going to walk with that money, and they're going to go, it'll go to someone else, and this will be a hollow, unfunded institution, which I don't want to see happen. I'm a big believer in private education. So if we can put that in, I'm in favor of it, this, this inter-local agreement, this, this concept, every single workshop, every single one, just if it's only 10 minutes, but we can stay up on our game and we can get up on our game. This is a lot, this is a lot to go through, and it's, it's absolutely exciting to go through it because it's, it's how we're gonna, it's how we're gonna function in the future. Let's see. State of Florida, management versus mismanagement. And I encourage everyone here to please look at the grand jury report. This is state grand jury now. This is, this is for the state of Florida in each individual depart, district. While we all get a wide latitude, every school board does, we're still held to these standards, and it's sobering to watch what the grand jury asks and speaks about and speaks to. So it's management versus mismanagement. Now, that's pretty vague, but it has to do with fiscal responsibility and educational responsibility and safety. Now, if we can't get a stop sign in, where in the world are we? We're, we're like handing the, 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 the state grand jury... jury, like, please, pick me, I can't get it right. It's the end of a road, it's the front of a school, it's a sidewalk, the kids walk through, but we can't do it right. So, please, read it. It's 125 pages, I did not bring Exhibit A. I have, I have the executive order number 22202. Please, everyone, read it. If you're involved with the school district, read it. It is so instructive and so helpful, and it will help you manage rather than mismanage. Let's see. I am going to, I am going to conclude my remarks at that point. Out of sheer mercy, I apologize for the time that I've taken up, but it's so critical that we get this duty right. And I thank my board members for participating to the extent they did. Because every idea that I heard was a good idea. And that will take us a long way toward management versus mismanagement. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Mr. Browning. Ms. Thoreau?
Yes, thank you. It was great to see Ms. Coleman again tonight. Constitution Week has been near and dear to this school district's heart, as long as I can remember. And when I see her show up, it's, it's always, that is what I connect, the Constitution with, with Ms. Coleman. So it was, it was great to have her in the house again tonight. Thank you for your kind words about the inter-local agreement, Board Member Browning. It's definitely been a journey. One of the first things I learned as part of the technical working group is that never again shall we not meet for 11 years straight. There was a lot to comb through. And what came from the technical working group is the draft that you now have that has gone to the respective attorneys for them to look through. So, I couldn't be any more excited than you about the upcoming work sessions on that particular topic. We will have our full meeting of all of our elected officials coming up before the end of the year, is the goal. I don't know that anyone knew what we were getting into when we first started combing through that old agreement. And we, but we did, we've slogged through it, there's still more to discuss. And so, the conversation I know will, will be robust and very thoughtful. When you think about how times have changed from 2008 to where we are now, it is a different world. It's kind of like the Model T versus the Tesla you'll be driving home tonight. You know, it's, it's, things have just changed. And so we really need to get to a point where, no matter what's going on politically or, or anything else economically, that our elected officials, of which as a citizen, I expect continue to collaborate moving forward. So, stay tuned for that. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Thoreau. Board Member King?
Yes, I would like to bring up, this, earlier in our meeting, we had two people come up and brought their concerns. And they struck a chord with me. One of them was the mama that brought the backpack, that was 17 and a half pounds. It was large. And actually, when she brought it up, I was curious, it looked pretty large. I'm like, what is in there? And then she fiddled with it a little bit. I'm like, what is she going to take out? And then she brought up the lockers. And I, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but I do know that if a student has wrong intent, it may not necessarily be in the locker. If they could bring it in a backpack, they could bring it in a guitar case, or unfortunately, any other means. So, I wonder if we could do some type of study, or get with our principles or something, and maybe, you know, the pros versus cons. Because when we have students, and if they're smaller in stature, stature, you know, and you're carrying a heavy backpack, it's not the same as if you are a big football player or something. And so, I don't know, I just think maybe we could have a little bit more information and entertain that topic for discussion. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about that.
Chair, I, if I may, I 100%-
Hold on Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Ms. King was still talking.
Oh, she asked for-
She was still talking, you were still talking.
Oh, excuse me.
Hold on Ms. King.
It's okay, I'll present it to you guys, I'm not sure, or if you want to have a workshop, or I don't, Chair, I don't know what you're thinking, or your thoughts, or the direction you would like for us to go.
Just saying, I would, I 100% share your sentiments. I absolutely agree. It's a question of propriety, ownership, rights, correct, easier to function, just everything. Everything flies in the face. Had I been on that board, I would have been what you're advocating. So, I am on the board, bring it up, I will be with you 100%. I, I've thought about that. I've been in some of the schools where they say, well, we didn't tear these out when we quit using them. Well, wait a minute, timeout here. So, I'm 100% on board with you.
That's the weight of two gallons of milk.
Correct. Right. And, and none of us were here when the board, I think, decided to do that. And I'm sure something happened during that time to make them decide that that was probably better. But now we're at a different time and era, and have, you know, unfortunately seen another event. So, I just think that's something that we could entertain.
I should come?
I put the bullet at the very top of my list of things I'm going to talk about, too. Thank you, first of all, to the, to the parent who brought the backpack. I 100% concur. As a parent of three children myself, my two oldest are using their basketball backpacks and don't have any room for their basketball shoes in their backpack because of how much is in it. I do believe it's going to, and, and I also have to say, my new middle schooler, going from elementary school, never having to do what he's having to do now, he definitely is not the size of someone who can carry all the weight that he's having to carry right now. But I'm certain it's going to take more than us just having conversation. Because logistically, I don't know, we don't even have enough lockers at all. And we probably even have a couple of new schools that don't have lockers at all in them. So, logistically, there's going to be a lot of work that would have to be done on the district's part, especially in these very large schools, like, like Westport, almost 3,000 students. I, I just had this conversation with my kids just like last week. Because I remember, I shared a full locker with someone the whole time I was in school. You know, I had the top, he had the bottom, whatever, and, and we shared the whole time we were in school together. We just, we haven't had that. And I am open to having those conversations, absolutely.
And some, you know, in our schools, their lockers are still sitting there, as, you know, you just walk through and you'll see them. So, I, I think that could just, you know, we could have that discussion later. But I would like to see us entertain that, if that's okay. My second topic was Mr. Elmore, a teacher, came before the board. Obviously, he's, has seen something. You know, we, we're not in the classroom, he's in the classroom, and he obviously has seen some things to come to this board to address his concern. So, I would like to see us, and that to me is a simple fix. You know what, we put out a report card on a Monday afternoon or Tuesday as requested, and problem solved. I mean, I think it is. I don't see that being a difficult issue. Fridays, you know, I'm not sure, really sure why Friday was chose, it's the end of the week. They might stick it in their backpack and keep it there all weekend.
Question, is that some policy that they have to go out on Fridays?
Probably not, it's probably just a practice.
Often they're not printed anyway.
Right.
So, no.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll take a look at that, yes. I get that, because that was just-
Yeah, often they're not printed, so they're digital now.
Right.
So, it's just asking, I guess, asking about the date of release.
Certainly.
Digital. But if they're following the sky word all the time.
But they're not.
They're great.
That's not always the case, so.
And how it coincides with the end of the quarter in the grades, and the teachers being able to produce final grades. So, it's, it's on my list as well.
And not every family has access.
Right, right, right.
Right, correct.
Yeah, and I don't think that, it, it bears looking into, I, I don't buy the concept initially until I see better data, more than anecdotal data, that, that there is child abuse associated with it. But that's, I, I'm, I'm very willing to take a look. And so, we're not prepared to indict parents or whomever, children. But the celebrations probably far exceed somebody that, like myself, that might have gotten too many Fs and not enough Ds to pull those Fs up. My joke, but I'm not that fancier, wasn't that fancier student in the second grade.
Ms. Thoreau?
Wait, I have one more thing.
I thought she, she had her hand in-
Oh, I thought you, I'm sorry.
Oh, you, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
And with my final comments tonight, there was some accusations made about, our comments made about management and mismanagement, and the stop sign. Mr. Browning, I know I reminded you, and I will do it again, you even filed a complaint with the state of Florida about the stop sign, and the state of Florida did not see anything there. So, it has been looked at by committees. You filed a complaint against the state of Florida, the state of Florida didn't see anything, they let it go. And I'm just going to leave that as my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I can comment to it, if, thank you Chair, I'll, I'll, since I addressed, it wasn't the state of Florida, it was, it was the federal folks, and it does fit under Title 6, and it doesn't really matter, as a matter of fact, how many times it have, there's been discrimination at that school. 1956 was a different era, it's a different time. Today is a different time. A stop sign is simply a stop sign. But the trick about the stop sign, it is a trap. And that is, that as soon as they put in a stop sign, they're recognizing that it's actually a road, of course, it was a road, all that time for that night, for that subdivision, that, that survey, which was 1904, because everybody worked in the packing plant, and it was an agricultural area, there weren't any white folks around there. It was all black folks in a black little community, and it has been discriminated against incredibly. And yeah, maybe in a thousand times, people have made an attempt to make it right. And we will make it right before it's over. It's just one of those things. When I go to my grave, they'll say, well, goodness gracious, that stop sign's not there. I know, that one fellow, who was that guy? He, he sure tried to get a stop sign there. And now we've had a wreck with a, with a cement truck and a bus. And what a shame, all those kids that got killed. That type of thing. I'm being dramatic, but that's what happens at an intersection. And right in front, within 25 feet of the front of the school. So, wow, yeah. Oh, but it was the feds that we filed with, and opened a case, and it wasn't myself, it was another party that did it. But doggone it, we will prevail. I'm sorry, that's just my belief. Thank you.
That's true. I did, I do stand corrected. It was a federal case, not for the state of Florida. And it was an OCR complaint that was filed. And they didn't see anything there, and they, they let it go.
They did see a lot, but the, the lawyers on the school board were able to close it. I acknowledge that. It's like losing a basketball game. It doesn't mean we'll lose the title. We will prevail. I'll throw a three-pointer up like that while I'm looking at the, in the other direction, and boom, and all of a sudden, boom, the rockets go off, we win the title. Thank you very much. It, it will prevail. I will predict that, that there will be safety signs, and there will be a end to the segregation down there, what's happened. There, there are a number of people that want to come up and address, as I said, come on, I'll bring you, you can come. Some of these are in wheelchairs, we lost two. Reverend Hanks passed, and Ms. Edith passed, Ms. Edith Dawes passed, but, and, and one's on dialysis. It's, it's a shame, the problem is Boj, Bojor. It's a shame how old everybody's getting, but we will prevail. I'm just saying, we will prevail.
I got to clarify something. I, I have to, it would be a tragedy. You just stated that there is segregation at this school. There is not segregation at this school. There may be some issues at this school, but there is no segregation at this school. Segregation has ended many, many, many moons ago. So, I don't want that to go out on the airwaves that Stanton Wearsdale is a segregated school is not.
Yes, sir, not inside, not inside the school, but under Title-
I'm just clarifying the statement that you made, Mr. Browning.
Under Title 6.
You said, you said, there is segregation.
Yes, there is, and-
Maybe in the neighborhood, maybe in the community, but not at Stanton Wearsdale.
No, at the school, under Title 6, walk-in zone is part of the school, and it is our responsibility. And it is part of the school. So, it is absolutely discriminated against, has been, and it will get rectified. And it is part of the school, Title 6 is, transportation, walk-in zone is part of the school.
Again, for the record-
I've discussed this at length with individual board members and with the board as a whole.
Hold on Attorney Powers, again, for the record, there was an OCR complaint. That OCR complaint was looked at by the federal government. There is not, I'm going to say it again, Stanton Wearsdale is not a segregated school. There may be some issues with that school, or even within that community. But for the record, it is not a segregated school. Attorney Powers?
It's probably not the appropriate time, given this is everyone's commentary. But this is an issue that keeps being raised again. Each of the board members have heard my analysis on the issue, and any potential solutions that I have regarding the issue. If it's an issue that's disagreed with by any board member or board members, they're free to accept my advice or not. However, we don't exercise control over that area. And just as was noted, I don't know if this is true or not, but the county doesn't want to put a stop sign because it'll recognize that they have control over it. We have less control, it's not our property. We can't put a stop sign and exercise control, or something we don't have. So, we've had board meetings and workshops, for the record, in which we have specifically discussed this issue, where we stand, what potential solutions are to address the county commission. And that has failed because old arguments were brought up, there is not a Title 6 issue, that was, that was dismissed by the Office of Civil Rights, and that's where we are. And just as an attorney, I'm, I've given you every, every bit of advice I can regarding this situation. If it is something that you disagree with my recommendations, I understand. Anyone is free to. However, I've given you what I believe is the best legal counsel available on this topic. And to have it brought up again, and the arguments made each time, that then have to be countered each time, is not useful for our meeting.
Thank you Attorney Powers.
Board Chair? Yes, I believe it is useful, because I am a board member. Legal counsel must recognize that once an item, that multiple laws persist that Title 6 is part of our responsibility, one of the six items that are necessary to, to desegregate or to make a school appropriate. A stop sign, paving, sidewalk, is appropriate. And this board member will continue to manage as cleanly and as, with full courtesy, with full respect for everyone involved. But I will not, I will not be a party to further discrimination in that area. We know we messed up with the survey, it's been brought in, it's been looked at. I can't tell you why things stumble, but they stumble. I can't tell you when it will get rectified, but I can tell you that in my heart, I believe it will get rectified. And it's my hope that we have the governor down when we dedicate the, those improvements, just like any other school in the district. And that we have something called the Stanton Solution- called the Stanton Solution, because little things, little pockets like this exist all across the state and everybody is working their tail off to end problems of the past and to go off into a glorious future that is appropriate for us as Americans. Thank you.
Attorney Powers.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how to keep saying this, because I don't, I do not want there to be a perception that Stanton Wearsdale is a segregated school.
No, I did not say that, sir.
Mr. Browning.
I think I may be able to address that by saying the following. There was an allegation that the, brought up before Mr. Browning was a board member by him and another individual, which indicated that Stanton Wearsdale, because it needed, there were a series of roads that led into that area, that they wanted everything from tree control maintenance, whatever it might be, and road services, that because it was within an area nearing and approaching the school, that it was the school's responsibility to do so. And when that argument failed with the county, that argument was brought against the school board as being a vestige of racial segregation under Title VI, which the federal desegregation order is released from some time ago. So the Office of Civil Rights looked into that, looked at the populations of students who are living there, looked at the services provided, and it determined that there was not a violation of Title VI, that there was not, I mean, it was a lengthy investigation which included a number of documents, and the Office of Civil Rights is the federal agency tasked specifically with dealing with that. That was dismissed by the Office of Civil Rights. Since that time, we've had continued indication or allegation that the school district needed to do something about a stop sign. The school district has engaged in discussions with the county and also done its own studies to try to determine exactly what needed to happen, if anything. From there, I mean, to boil it down simply, we do not exercise control over that property.
Right.
It is inappropriate and not a responsibility, but also not, it would be inappropriate for us to exercise control over that area, just like another agency can't come in and start exercising control over our area either.
Right.
So the solution offered was to speak to the county commission or speak to the county to have the board write a letter saying we certainly don't oppose any efforts you might have to place a stop sign in this area, because it was alleged that we were somehow holding up their efforts to replace that stop sign. Certainly, we don't have, we've not in any way tried to impinge on the county's right to do so. If the county determines that it's needed and road work there is needed, or tree maintenance is needed, or anything else in that community is needed, the county is welcome to proceed and do as they wish. However, from our perspective, an area we don't exercise control over, that is, there are limitations to what we can do. We attempted to lobby and write a letter that would just indicate to the county that, we couldn't agree on terminology which we'd put in that.
Right.
And I drafted a proposed letter, which was not agreed to, so.
So for the record, this board has no objection to the state, to the county, or even the federal government putting a stop sign at the intersection that has been discussed numerous times. It is not in our power or our jurisdiction to put a stop sign there as a school district. It is beyond our control because that area is not under the control of the Marion County Public School District. Am I correct in that?
Correct, sir. And in order to lobby in any different direction, it would have to be determined that that was a specific walking hazard within the school zone. And this is part of the conversation, I believe, which we've had publicly with the board before, and there is a statutory definition of what is a walking hazard. And it's not, it's not just, I believe it is and you believe it's not, it measures traffic studies, it measures the type of roads going through, the speed and the times of opening and closing of the schools, and it has to require that a representative of the local law enforcement agency, of the county, and also the school board observe that data and see if it's within the limits that would allow us to trigger statutory requirements, and it was not. So, and that was, that meeting, by the way, is the one which I believe was referred to earlier as, you know, some, a board member not being part of that meeting and wanted to attend, that meeting is intended to be a neutral meeting between three agencies, it's not intended to be for any board member or anybody to go down and lobby for it, so it's supposed to just be data collection.
Thank you. And this board has been very patient in indulging and allowing or hearing the issue or the issue brought by board members concerning Stanton Wearsdale. And to be honest, I think this board has exhausted its resources in being able to deal with this situation, so we have, we've discussed it and discussed it and discussed it and to no resolution, so I do want to make sure that the record shows that this board did try to come to some type of resolution that's within our power and this situation is beyond the power and control of this board, so I'm very, I'm very fine with no longer to continue this conversation on this issue because we have exhausted it. And I've heard, all the other board members have heard this being restated over and over and over and over again, but I think the next place that this needs to be heard, needs to be, the person that's making these statements needs to take it to a higher level than this board, because this board does not have the authority to do anything about that situation.
Board Chair, may I, sir?
Ms. Campbell.
I mean, I'm just ready for us to continue on our comments. Ms. King, did you have any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to.
I'm not certain.
Can I move my comments?
But sir, you've already had your comment time, and I understand the chair has order of this meeting.
On this subject.
Ms. Campbell, are you finished?
I mean, is Ms. King finished with your comment time?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, I think there were some words that were intended to put some bad light onto this board. I heard grand jury, you know.
Misbezzing.
Misbezzing, I heard a lot of that and I just felt I needed to correct that because like the rest of you, I took a constitutional oath and I take it very seriously and I don't like the, just the thought or the words that I heard and I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Chair, if I may.
We want to, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. So just kind of going back on some of the things that we've talked about tonight already, I love the good work that our social studies teachers are doing, I've had the privilege of actually attending and being a part of Ms. Sutton's class at Osceola before, and it just reminded me when I was in high school that I had wonderful educators in American history and government and that led me to even pursue a minor in political science and a master's degree in political communication. And so I'm just grateful for the amazing work that our teachers are doing in that vein and as well as Ms. Thorough mentioning, Ms. Coleman here with the Constitution and the Daughters of the American Revolution, and I just, I love that, that it's a huge part of what I've done in my career and I'm just grateful for the good work that started from the teachers I had when I was young as well. I also wanted to state, similarly to what Ms. King kind of was saying, that each board member takes our jobs very seriously and we also all treat them very differently. So while we all take our jobs very seriously, we all treat this role differently, when there are items that I see on an agenda that I want to acknowledge, I tend to ensure that we vote on it. If it's not something that I believe does not need to be approved, then I have chosen to discuss those items after we've voted, rather than pulling an item and then discuss, if it's an item I don't have an issue with. Obviously this evening, I did pull an item, we were able to address it, correct it, and move on. But what I'm going to say right now is on something we voted on previously, because it wasn't something that needed additional conversation, and that was again on job descriptions. So tonight, we approved five, so one was amended, but we actually approved five, and I'm so grateful for the team to continue to work on job descriptions. This board knows, I harp on it all the time, but just as I mentioned this evening, when you have a longstanding employee that has been in a role doing a wonderful job, who then leaves the district, if you don't have a job description that aligns with the work that person was actually doing, then when you go to post that job, you can't actually get the person to do exactly what the other person who left the job has been doing if it's not a part of their job description. So I continue to be grateful for the work that the team is doing, I'm grateful we approved five tonight, and I know that we'll continue to do those as we update them along the way. Also, something else we talked a bit about tonight, I just want to say, I love to buy local. But when there are products and services from outside of Marion County that offer something different than what I'm able to purchase locally, I have no problem receiving items, training and more from out of Marion County and even out of the state of Florida. I love to buy local, I love to consider what that means to our community. However, I'm currently receiving a degree from a school in Virginia, because there are no schools in the state of Florida that provide what I need from the educational standpoint of what I'm receiving. I also want to say Teslas are not made in Florida. There are times that we purchase things that are made outside of the state of Florida and outside of the community of Marion County, because there are resources that are outside of our community that cannot be found here. Moving on, I appreciate the robust discussion that we had around legislative priorities that we discussed on Thursday. I did submit all of those that we agreed to, there was some discussion obviously that we had about them, I believe there was a little bit of misleading information that reached the media about what the intent of those conversations were, but I'm grateful that we did discuss all of the different legislative priorities that we had and came to some commonalities on what we wanted to put forth as far as what we wanted to be recognized by the advocacy committee. That meeting is coming up on October 7th, so we'll see, I'll let you all know which ones of ours rose to the top and where we go with that, but I will be having that meeting on October 7th. Also, I did want to thank Mr. Browning for bringing up the interlocal agreement again, because I am grateful for the work that Ms. Thorough did so diligently representing us in that working group, but I too have been looking over the draft and I personally, this is this board member saying, believe we do have a lot more work to do on it to ensure that the school board's interests are strongly considered. I'm looking forward to that discussion, I'll just leave that there. But I do believe that the school board's interests, which is who we represent, need to be a little more strongly considered than what currently is there, and I know we'll have robust discussion about that. Also, wanted to offer an update from the city, with the City Planning and Zoning Commission, as you all know, I'm our liaison to that, also with the city council, they have an upcoming meeting on September 20th, city council does, where they will be considering the final approval or denial of the apartment project across the street from Saddlewood Elementary School. In those conversations, the widening of that road immediately in front of Saddlewood, the city has received the funding for it, so they are intending to start construction relatively soon on that road immediately in front of Saddlewood, and they're also, as I said, September 20th, considering the apartment complex that potentially will be directly across the street, and so that conversation will be happening on September 20th with city council. Last evening, I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission and I wanted you all to be aware that the Planning and Zoning Commission has approved for a multifamily project that will directly impact South Ocala, Osceola and Forest, as well as another multifamily project that will impact College Park, Liberty and Westport. Those projects will be going to city council in October. Again, it just further validates the expedience that we need in wrapping up whatever this interlocal agreement is, that we can come to some resolution, get written back into comprehensive plans and ensure that the school board's needs are considered when these projects are approved. And finally, as I mentioned in our last work session, I'm just gonna mention it again, that I continue to have an interest in an alternative to what our current alternative placement process looks like. I know that we did not have any alternative placements or expulsions that we considered or that are not on the board meeting tonight, we don't have any this evening, but I am of the mindset, this board member is of the mindset, that we need some sort of step-down model or an internal alternative placement option that will seriously focus on the educational success of our students that find themselves in disciplinary situations. And that's all I had. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our board members for their comments respectfully. Thank you Superintendent for reminding us about Hispanic Heritage Month. We do want to recognize that this is a very, very diverse community and as the world is more diverse, our county is diverse, our city is diverse, and so therefore our school system is gonna be diverse and we should celebrate our diversity, that we're not all the same, that we're not all built the same, thanked the same, walked the same, chewed gum the same. Diversity brings about creativity and brings about strength in numbers. Several times tonight, throughout this meeting, we heard about governmental limits or over the limit or thresholds, personal limits, when it comes to the consent agenda, every board member has the opportunity to pull any item regardless of the limit or the financial amount that's listed in that item. There is no, we have, this board has no set governmental limit that we have to pull an item, there is no threshold, there is no over the limit individually. We may have limitations or thresholds that we look for in what we pull, but there is no set governmental limit or threshold for this board, I have to make sure that we make that clear. Oftentimes, we hear people say things and just because it's said several times, it sometime can be perceived as it being a rule in place or policy that's in place, and that is not, there is no rule or policy in place that says that there is a threshold that we have to have. If it's $1, we can pull, if it's 35 cents, we can pull that item, and if it's $10 billion, we can pull that item, so there's not a threshold on items that are pulled from the agenda to discuss. There is no fiscal threshold or limitation. Often, also tonight, I heard several things about the outsourcing of things or looking to, looking within our district to get our teachers or individuals within our employment ranks to be able to come up and do some of these things that we have, that we utilize other companies to do. Well, I thought about that, I'm listening to that, but I'm asking myself, what more can we add onto the backs of our teachers and staff when we've challenged them to prepare our kids for education, to prepare them for this changing world? They, many are already burdened with a heavy, heavy workload and the business of their business is to educate these kids. I've heard some troubling things tonight that just left me puzzled. I heard comments about being a big believer in private education. I didn't get on this board, I didn't run to be on this board, to be a person on the board, to be a big believer in private education, I'm a big believer in public education, I'm a product of public education, so therefore I'm on the board to support public education, K through 12. K through 12 public education, and make sure that our public education system is suitable for everyone that comes in, whether they have an IEP or whether they don't have an IEP. Whether they, no difference where they come from in this county, public education should be public education for all. I keep getting the question, how is it that it appears that, and this is clarity for the public so that I can say it, and people will understand, that it appears that the board is being monopolized in its conversation and its discussions about certain items and certain issues within the school district? Every board member has the opportunity to discuss any item that they want to discuss. They have opinions. They have beliefs. They have the opportunity to put their opinions and beliefs out there. And I respect everyone's opinions and beliefs about that. But there is not a monopoly. It appears sometimes that one individual or two individuals may hawk the meeting, but they have that right to discuss any item that they feel is appropriate for a board meeting. So I just want to make that clear to the public that we can't limit a person's ability to voice their opinions or their beliefs on certain items. They have that right. Every board member has that right. I do want to address an issue that's going to be coming up. We have been alternating our board meetings from afternoon to evening, back and forth. We do have to make a decision on the October 25th meeting for the mere fact that it has to be advertised. And we can't wait until the timing, right before, to say whether or not it's going to be an evening meeting or a morning meeting. So we need to kind of, you know, when we start this, we said we were going to look at it again, but we have to kind of make a decision. We don't kind of, we have to make a decision tonight about whether or not it's going to be evening or morning. And we can't just keep saying we're going to wait till the reorganizational meeting. We have to, because of advertising purposes, board. So, well, it's your pleasure. Ms. Thoreau.
Thank you, Chair. What is the actual process that we have to adhere to? Because normally, we have our reorganization meeting in November, and that's when we set, this may be a question for Attorney Powers, that's when we set the day, the times of our school board meeting?
That's correct. In this case, however, what we did was we established sort of a pilot project here. And at that time, the board indicated which of the pilot project is to run until end of September. And then that leaves a gap period of time between now and our pickup again in November. We're required at the organizational meeting to state and for the clerk to take down and report to the Department of Education our meeting dates for the upcoming year, as best we know them at least, or at least our meeting times. So on, as of the 25th, as of right now, I have it scheduled as a 5:30 PM school board meeting, because it would go back to the normal evening cycle. And we would treat everything between now and our November organizational meeting as the prior, the way it was prior to the pilot project.
Right.
Then in November, if the board wishes to, between now and then, discuss for its organizational meeting what times to have, starting from November forward, then that would be, I mean, we need to do that one way or the other, is to discuss, are we going to extend the pilot project or not? But that is, if we wish to extend the pilot for the project and change these meetings for October 25th, though, we need to say so now and have the board vote on that change of time now, so that we can get it properly advertised.
Is it on, we can't vote on it tonight because it's not on the agenda?
Right now, it's a, it's a, I mean, the board could establish at least consensus if it wanted to change anything. But the 5:30 is what I have it listed down as right now for October 25th. Now, if it's still something that's subject to change, you all wish to change the timing of that meeting, you certainly may. It just has to be properly noticed and advertised.
So it's just, we only have one evening meeting. My recommendation would just, maybe just leave it alone, and then the former, that way we don't have to change anything, advertise. And then when the new board comes at your organizational meeting, then you guys can decide as a new board. But it's just one meeting at that point, unless, I don't know if you have felt.
You know, at the organizational meeting on that date, we're going to need to be prepared to accept, because we have to report what our meeting times for the future are. So if there's some discussion about whether we wish to continue that, at the organizational meeting is the time at which we would need to make that change, or we end up having to submit to the Department of Education twice, which is possible and doable. But the cleanest way is to do it all at once at the organizational meeting.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm clear, because I was the one that put this forward originally. Just want to make sure I'm clear. So if we do nothing tonight, then it will just naturally lapse back to the default of 5:30 for one more meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Just, I just, I just want, when we do the organizational meeting on the 22nd, okay, a script has to be prepared.
Right.
So we cannot have on that day, you make a decision and you vote. If anything, we would have to bring it to a work session, so that way at that last work session in October, then the script can be prepared to be read on the 22nd. Because the script will have to be prepared a week in advance before that, as to what we're doing. Because someone has, the new chair will be reading that script, so they won't be able to just do it off the cuff for you to decide on that day, because the script won't be ready.
Right. That date is the date that we sort of announce it, and it goes from us to DOE. So it doesn't really allow for decision-making time on that date. That's correct.
So saving it until the reorganizational meeting does not give the new board the opportunity
To weigh in.
to weigh in that evening? Okay, that leads me to my second question. And I wanted to say something before the scouts left. Are those Eagle Scouts? Yes. You guys have sat through a long one.
Thank you.
So we have a decision to make, I guess, tonight. And from my perspective, I would like to know, I'll share from my own perspective first. And that is, I have not heard anything, one way or another. And to me, that confirms that you can have a nice space with plenty of room, and it doesn't matter if it's 9:00 in the morning or 5:30 in the evening. People are going to show up when they have something on their mind that they want to discuss and that they want us to know about. And they're either going to make time at 5:30, or they're going to make time at 9 o'clock. So I feel like my original intent was to make sure that we were providing access for everyone, that if they can't make 5:30 meetings because of their work schedule or their personal life, that they could make a 9:00 AM. That was my whole rationale behind all of this from the beginning, was to try to make it as attendable as possible, if that's even a word. So in the spirit of that, and minimizing paperwork, confusion, having to notice things, that's not making it any harder than it has to be. From where I'm sitting, I certainly haven't seen it not working, and I haven't gotten any complaints. And I really do like the idea. I think it's very important that if we're going to be representing, that we need to represent all, whether they work nights, whether they work evenings. Everyone needs to have an opportunity to come before us should they choose to. So that's where I am with this.
Ms. Thoreau?
Yes. My thoughts on it, I won't be on the board post that announcement meeting. So I would like to see that board have some input into this. It's my perspective that I have witnessed essentially zero, sometimes two, I counted. I've been, it's been an empty audience with the exception of employees. So tonight and other evening, folks can come. I would also say that Friday night venue is also zero. There were two people. It's very difficult, the Friday night.
That's budget meeting.
We did, we just did.
That was a special.
And to do it on a, on those odd times at 9:00 in the morning, it, this place is empty. So anecdotally, you know, that isn't a very big sample. I get that, you know, statistically, I get that. However, for a test, I went along with the test. I wasn't in favor of it, but I went along with it on a 4-1 basis. But I will say that I thought, like, tonight was a beautiful representation. We had people in almost every aisle, you know, not a lot, but it was, I'm just going to put a number at about 12. Maybe it was 15. And so that works. This is evening. People can get out, can get the job, you know. In the morning, you're taking kids to school, or you're doing whatever you're doing. And for whatever the demographics, what happens, I think, I, or I do come down hard on the 5:30. And a single time, whatever you decide, a single time, so people can count on it. Everybody was confused. They said, well, that's not a work session. That was the kind of calls I got. Well, was that a work session? Why was that in the morning? What was, well, we're doing a pilot. Well, we're doing it. So it was very, very difficult for the calls I got. And so that's where I come down. I just leave it alone, let the new people decide. And if you can, they could have an opinion, all ready to go, and then on that November, when they step in, bang, do it, and then announce, and then do whatever you're going to do. They could easily have that on the agenda and then implement whenever it was prudent according to the law. So I'm in favor of just leaving it alone. 5:30 is great. Seems to work, evidenced tonight, and we'll go forward.
Ms. Kamal.
Thank you, Chair. I too, obviously appreciated the pilot that we've tried with this. And I also understand the need to have access for those potentially who might wanted to attend, who weren't able to during the day. The interesting thing is, whenever you happen to go to a county commission meeting that always starts at 9:00 AM, you always have complaints there. Oftentimes, I'm not going to say always. Oftentimes, I've heard complaints of people saying, "I had to take off work all day long because you had this issue on the agenda that I wanted to speak to." And so I've seen it both ways, I guess. The thing that I see as a challenge for us if we continue with the 9:00 AM meeting is, just like the recognition that we gave this evening to teachers, we would be pulling those teachers out of their classrooms to do that. I understand we would still have one evening meeting and one daytime meeting. But it would reduce the ability for us to have students in the audience. It would reduce the ability for us to have administrators and others in the audience for daytime meetings, unless we become a field trip destination, which I don't, I don't know that that's something that we're thinking about doing.
Government at work.
I mean, that would be a really interesting concept, I guess. And in that turn, we certainly could have, you know, one time or something. The way I see it, I think that we go back to the regular plan of the 5:30 meetings consistently and go ahead, and this is this board member speaking, go ahead and have our November 22nd say that we're doing it 5:30 moving forward. And then perhaps a December work session with the new board to talk about it if we want to change it, starting in the new calendar year. And the only reason I say that is because we did have to make a change, where we had to submit something to the state to change what we're doing right now, as well as we had to submit something to the state whenever we moved over here. So I mean, making that amendment, while it can be cumbersome a bit, it's not unheard of, because we've just done it in the last year twice. So that's what I would like to see us do, is if we go ahead and go back to the 5:30, go ahead and have that as our organizational meeting with our new board members, saying it'll be 5:30, and then have a work session topic in December to discuss it with the new board and see if they want to go in a different direction.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
That sounds pretty orderly to me. I can get behind that.
Works for me. Superintendent, can we schedule that conversation for a work session after the November reorganizational meeting?
Yes, sir, we certainly can. Absolutely.
And that way, the new board will have a chance to talk it over. Yep.
Very cleanly presented, and I think it's appropriate. I think it will, it'll handle all factors.
So for the record, we will be going back to the 5:30 meeting. And we will have another discussion about this, once the new board is seated. And we'll, I'm sure we'll have a work session to discuss all of that.
We do have one more morning meeting, though, right? Our meeting in, do we have one more morning? Or no? We're done with mornings? I thought we had a September morning one, or?
There's one more.
One more, okay.
We have Neil's work sessions, but there's a.
No, no, we have one more.
Board meeting.
7th, 9:00.
We have one more board meeting.
That is correct. September 27th is a 9:00 AM meeting.
Yeah, right. Correct. So starting in October.
That would be the last morning board meeting until further discuss.
Right.
Okay. Thank you all. With that being said, I will conclude my comments for the sake of time. I do want to thank all of our staff members as well for being here tonight and for the job that you do all the time. I just, I really have an issue sometimes when we get painted in a negative light because of misinformation. I think we have to dispel truth and facts and make sure that what's going out doesn't incite people to think that something is going on. My final comment is going to be that we're not, we're not a school district that is engaging in mismanagement and discrimination. That's not, that's not our job. That's not, that's not our role. Our role is to educate kids and to do it the best way that we can and to do it fiscally, in a fiscally responsible way. So with that being said, there being a further business man, have a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn by Board Member Thoreau, seconded by Board Member King. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Post have the same sign. Meeting adjourned at 7:58 PM.